First off, we're going to have the candidates give their opening statements. Beyond that, we'll enter into a round of questions. Each candidate will have the opportunity to answer each question. They'll be given a minute to do so. After the candidates all answer the question, we'll ask if anyone has a follow-up comment or rebuttal. They'll have approximately 30 seconds for those rebuttals. After that, we have a series of simple yes or no questions for the candidates. Each will be given the opportunity to answer. And the order in which the candidates will be asked the questions has been determined by a pre-game lot drawing process. All very fair. Lastly, we'll go into a series of directed questions, at which point in time the candidates will have an opportunity to ask one question of one of their opponents. And we'll go in then to either a final question or the candidate's closing comments, the order of which has again been chosen by lot. So, if, gentlemen, you're ready to begin, we will now begin our 2013 Muskegon City Commission debates. David?
Starting with opening comments, welcome candidates. And first will be Bill Larson.
Thank you. They got the old guy up here first. I was first elected to the city commission in November of 1979. Back then, I think, I thought I knew everything. Now that I'm 65, I know that I don't. But there are some things I do know about city government. Robert's Rules of Order, the city charter, the city's master plan, the city's unions and its at will employees, the city's utilities and the water filtration plant, the wastewater system as how it relates to the city, Act 51, which is the governing law that funds city streets. Five areas where I hope to make a difference are crime slash public image, economic development, abandoned or empty buildings, the city employees are being asked to do more and being paid less, and concern for seniors, veterans, youth, and the poor. A vote for me is a vote for experience. Thank you very much.
Next up will be Ken Johnson.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. It's good to see you all here tonight, and I welcome hearing from your individual questions afterwards. Also, I'd like to thank the Muskegon Chronicle, MCC, and the Chamber of Commerce for organizing this event. It's much appreciated, and their efforts to better inform the voters strengthens our democracy. I am Ken Johnson. I am running for city commissioner at large, as you all are well aware if you're here. I'm born and raised here in Muskegon. I know our community well, having attended Oakview Elementary, Steel Middle School, and Muskegon High School. I share in our citizens' aspirations for a better Muskegon. I think we all want to see, we all recognize that Muskegon has such great potential, but we've not been able to achieve it over the years. We've had our fair share of ups and downs, but we always get up off the ground. I also am well aware of how the world works, having gotten my degree in international affairs at George Washington University, and I now telecommute from Muskegon, so I'm here to bring my talents to bear, to make Muskegon the very best place possible.
Next, opening statement, Mark Maliter.
Good evening, everybody. My wife and I, Kim, have lived in the city of Muskegon for 18 years in a few different locations. We are actually small business owners, have a hair salon in the city of Muskegon that we developed, and I've run since 2007. Myself, I've been employed at SA of Holland, which used to be called Newway Ankerlock, since 1996, which is actually a local, one of the larger local manufacturers in the city of Muskegon. So, one of the reasons I'm running is I believe I can bring the voice of a small business owner and someone with the experience in the industry, bring that voice to the city commission to help round out the board a little bit better. Speaking of my qualifications, I graduated with engineering degree from Western Michigan back in 1988. I've worked in the engineering field since that time. The past 10 years, I've worked in engineering management and also staff. So, I believe that my education and my experience, my experience with running projects to completion, my experience with managing people, with long-term strategic planning and with budgeting, will be an asset for the board. I think we can help to make them, or to help them make better decisions and affect positive change. Thank you.
And the last opening statement from Dan Sevenga.
Hello, I'm Dan Sevenga. I've lived in Muskegon for 10 years. When I came here from living overseas, I've been really welcome to the Muskegon community, and the thing that I like most about it is the ability to step right in and make a difference wherever you're at. I've been involved in a lot of volunteer and professional activities, and I feel a lot of those relate to the job of city commissioner, so that's why I'm running. In particular, I've had some experience related to jobs as the dean of workforce and talent development here at MCC, as well as working for Muskegon Area First. I've been active in my neighborhood association, which is very concerned about public safety. I was the downtown manager in downtown Muskegon from 2005 through 2010, and got a lot of experience in commercial and economic development. So, those are some issues I think that are important for the city and why I was interested to run. Those experiences have also taught me to be able to listen to a lot of people, get diverse points of view, and to make good decisions that move organizations and communities forward. Thank you.
We'll start with a series of questions, each for a minute with a 30-second rebuttal. And we'll start with Ken, and then go on to Bill, Mark, and Dan. How would you rezone the Sapi property? Ken?
How would I re-
How would you rezone-
How would the city rezone Sapi?
The Sapi property.
Well, I would just like to make clear, one, whatever we were to zone it, if we were to zone it today, tomorrow, what have you, it would have no impact on the bearing of the property as is, as is owned by Melching. So, Ken, wave a wand and make it what we want tomorrow. He's grandfathered in there. That said, I would like to see it cleaned up and environmental risks eliminated, and then used for the best and highest purposes, which could be manufacturing, advanced manufacturing. I'm not opposed to advanced manufacturing. Muskegon desperately needs jobs, good-paying jobs. So, we have light industrial and advanced manufacturing on there, whether that's windmill components being built, solar panels being built there. I think that could be used. Otherwise, mixed unit, mixed purpose development there works well as well. A planned unit development is what we're going to have to pursue with Melching. We're going to have to work with Melching on what we can do with that in a planned unit environment, because we can't just wave a wand and rezone it and have that happen tomorrow.
Bill, same question. How would you rezone the Sapi property?
I'd rezone it to lakefront recreation, opposed to what Ken says. I believe that the action that the planning commission took to not allow the aggregates to be stored there was the start of a long look at Melching's best interest, and Melching will have that property very much longer, and I believe that the new owners are susceptible to lakefront recreation. As far as things that I would like to see, I'd like to see it be a public-private partnership, possibility of a working sawmill, maybe a smokehouse, fish house, yacht basin, run the city path through the bike path through the property, and generally just make it not an eyesore, but a thing of beauty. Thank you.
Mark, same question. How would you rezone the Sapi property?
I guess, maybe I'm a little confused, but I thought it was deed restricted in the sale, so I guess I don't think you can rezone it. I think if Melching were to be able to reopen that negotiation with Sapi, I would hope that the city could become involved in the conversation, but really, it's private ownership, and, you know, I'm probably not going to be a fan of a lot of people, but unfortunately, you know, because he did buy it with the zoning the way it is, it's really up to him, and we can't step in there and make it less profitable for him or ruin his investment. So, I guess we'd have to do our best to work with Mr. Melching to make sure it is in our best interest as much as we can, so.
Dan, finally, how would you rezone the Sapi property?
Sure. It's a gorgeous piece of property. If you look at the aerial views, it's right on Muskegon Lake. The bike path comes by it. There's some nice historic buildings on the corner that could be commercially redeveloped. I, like the others, see that it is owned by a private property owner, has current zoning rights. I think that it is possible to be proactive and move ahead with some conversations about future zoning, and that could possibly impact further subsequent owners. I think that the idea that seems to be emerging of port and industrial activity kind of being on the east side of Muskegon Lake is a good one. And so, right now, that might be preferable to so, than having manufacturing or industry in the lakeside neighborhood, but those private property rights are still important. So, I would just encourage the city to move forward in kind of working towards a commercial, recreational, and residential use.
Thank you. Gentlemen.
May I just rebut quickly?
Rebuttal back 30 seconds.
I would very much like to see the Sapi property be used for the best interest, but also mesh well with the lakeside neighborhood. I don't want to duplicate our lakeside neighborhood. I don't want to turn that into a mixed-use commercial-residential, when we could strengthen our, like I say, district in that endeavor. But we do desperately need jobs. We have plenty of commercial space and residential space throughout the city that could be adapted and reused, but we have a lack of jobs. So, I would like to see that property be used in a way that can create jobs for our citizens.
Anyone else have any final comments?
Well, in response to what Ken said, I mean, to sit here and think that you're going to put manufacturing on there is a pipe dream. You know, the best use for that property is recreational or a combination of port facility type development. And those create just as many jobs as whatever little manufacturing that might go there.
Thank you, gentlemen. Jobs are a pivotal issue in Muskegon, and MLive readers specifically want to know, what should City Hall be doing to improve not just the job situation in Muskegon, but the job situation for jobs that can support a family? And the first person to answer this will be Bill.
Well, first of all, they've taken one minor step. Their, one of the big problems the city used to have was the inspection department. And for whatever reason, you've got to remember, I've been around since 1980 dealing with this problem, and so they've conquered that. You have to remember, they have a smaller staff because of the cuts from state participation. So, you've got to be able to have a staff that can take an idea, be able to be responsive to the developer, and then make sure that there are sites available that'll, you know, work for what they want to do. Some of the problems I see with the current city commission is they take too long. They have a tendency to be, they don't want to act. I'm an action person. I can look at a plan and see if it's viable, and then we need to be, as employees of the city, be able to take that plan and then bring it to fruition. Thank you.
Mark, same question to you. What should City Hall do to improve family-supporting job development?
I think you really mean manufacturing jobs, and I think, I'm encouraged, I work over in industrial park there, and most of the empty buildings are now full with manufacturing, so I think there's a lot of good things happening. It's obviously not enough. We still have some high unemployment. I think our city definitely needs to become basically known to be industry and business-friendly and be able to react quickly and work with their needs. There's just too many other people fighting for jobs, so we have to be a-plus player in this. I think port development, I think that's an advantage that Muskegon has that nobody else has. We definitely have a deep-water port that we need to develop, and I think that's going to be a good future spot for Muskegon. You know, we could become the new Midwest shipping channel. If you look at Chicago, they're basically rail and highway locked, so we're probably going to be able to get a lot of their overflow. I think, you know, even developing our lakefront and becoming a better place to live and a more attractive place to live will help. It could actually be the final decision on whether somebody chooses Muskegon over Ottawa County, it says we had a better beachfront, et cetera, so.
Excellent. Dan, same question.
Sure. I'm a big believer in the multiplier effect related to jobs. We have, you know, 15,000 people working in the city in various industries, but some of them produce more economic impact than others. Definitely, manufacturing is an industry that provides a lot of multiplier and economic impact. Tourism also does that. I think that we need to focus, and the planning and economic development department should focus on those industries that are going to create jobs that bring wealth to Muskegon. And like Mark, so I think we need to work with our manufacturers. We've had an amazing turnaround in the Port City Industrial Park. We've been doing a lot to promote tourism, but I think the city needs to continue to work alongside the county of Muskegon in that regard. And finally, if we're going to have more people working productively, people need to be trained for jobs. I've worked as the dean of workforce here, and I think we need to continue to strengthen partnerships where we get people in our city the training that are going to meet those jobs that are available.
Lastly, Ken, to you.
As several candidates have touched on, manufacturing, manufacturing is a key. It's a key part of our history. It's going to be a key part of our future. Advanced manufacturing is where we're going to need to invest and attract. There are many manufacturers that are now insourcing, that they send to Mexico, they send to China, and they're insourcing. We need to work to capture a slice of that pie, as well as foreign manufacturers that abroad are bringing manufacturing here, kind of the philosophy Toyota does, and many other companies do, the philosophy of building where you sell. And so, we can, we can work to attract that as a city. Beyond that, I think that we need to be supporting small businesses. It's not necessarily creating jobs, we can be creating businesses, enabling our residents to start up their own enterprises, to support their families with that endeavor. And port, port development, we desperately need to strengthen our shipping capabilities here, increase that, and shipping logistics is going to be key, and attracting manufacturers that can take advantage of our multimodal access points with the rail, with the water, and with the road.
Thank you. Are there any additional comments? Nope, thank you. Again, from what we hear from our MLive readers, there's a great interest in what you folks would be able to do, or what your positions would be on the downtown urban violence, mainly from a number of our urban neighborhoods, gun violence that we have seen in the community in the past few years. If elected, how would you address this issue, and how does redevelopment and safety in our neighborhoods fit into that plan? Mark, you got the first.
All right. Excuse me. Well, you know, just like in any organization, and safety is always one of the top priorities, if not the top priority. I think, you know, obviously, economic development's going to help us on the long term. You know, the more jobs are out there, the less idle time and people on the streets. Regarding what to do about the short-term problem, I'm an engineer, and we have a saying, it's always been done before. I would like to see a committee put together, a safety committee, staff with such as, you know, the chief of police, and prosecutors, et cetera, that could go out and be tasked to research what other communities have done with similar issues, find out what works and what doesn't work, present the plan to the board along with, you know, obviously their budgeting needs and some targeted action items and some metrics to make sure it's successful, and then to implement that plan if deemed appropriate. The other thing I think Steve brought up, good point last night about eliminating some of the blight would, I think, help actually reduce some of the violence as well. Thank you.
Dan, the same question. How would you address urban violence as a commissioner, and how does redevelopment and safety of city neighborhoods fit into that plan?
Sure. I think there's a practical and cultural implications to this question. On the practical side, what Mark termed the short term, I do think a police presence would help. Looking at what other cities do, I know that the city of Chicago had a terrible year for homicides in 2012, and under the leadership of their mayor, they've really turned it around in 2013. And their two strategies have been increased neighborhood police presence in hotspot zones and surveillance. And I think that we should adopt similar tact here in Muskegon. On the cultural side, I live downtown. I walk through some of these hotspots daily, and people just don't have a lot of hope. That's the main cultural element at work here. I think we need to somehow get through to the kids that are prone to the violence and are brought up in that atmosphere, and either through mentoring or better achievement through schools, somehow break that cycle of despair where they really don't see a future for themselves here.
Same question for Ken. How will you address urban violence? How does redevelopment and safety of city neighborhoods fit into the plan?
I'll just jump off what Dan was saying about the sense of hopelessness in our urban environments of our city. I am involved with a group called Working Together for Youth. We meet regularly in Muskegon Heights on violence and crime in the Heights and in the city of Muskegon. It's just a bunch of concerned citizens, really. And we've been going out into communities, listening and learning, and one of the things that we've been learning is this sense of hopelessness that exists amongst many, many of our youth, and fear, a fear in their communities and the neighbors going to school. And that fear causes some of them to carry weapons, including guns. And so, we need to deal with that fear, deal with that hopelessness. We also need to find out why those guns are getting into the community. Why has there been such an uptick in guns in recent years? We need to hold ourselves accountable as well. This situation didn't just magically happen overnight. Crime last year was at a six-year high. This happened over successive years. So, we need to hold ourselves accountable as to how it got the point it did. We need to equip our police force with the resources they need, and that could include surveillance. I'd like to leave that up to the community to decide whether or not we want to put security cameras in our parks or around our city. That will be left up to the city. I'd also like to see a potential milage to support and enhance our policing capabilities.
Thank you. Bill, same question on the urban violence and your plans and how they would fit to the city and safety.
Well, there's every industrial city in the United States sitting here having the same discussion. So, you need to take the best amount of information you can get from the smartest people. We hire a police chief, and we hire policemen to police our streets. But are we putting the emphasis where the crime is? Do we have buildings, like empty school buildings, where we could have police substations? Are we working with a prosecutor to let him know that if you do crime in the city of Muskegon, you will get the toughest sentence you can be given? The only way to stop speeding is to enforce it, give tickets over and over. The only, only way to control some of this violence is to be where it happens and show a presence and drive them somewhere else. Anybody that comes here that wants to put a manufacturing plan in and finds out we're the 99th most violent city in the nation is going to think twice. So, it's a real problem, and there's not easy answers, but that might be a few suggestions.
Starting with Mark, and then across the panel, any rebuttals? Anything else you'd like to say?
I would just, oh, I'm sorry.
Ken?
Are we getting going in order?
Yeah.
I weighed mine. I was just going to point out, I really, in regards to Ken's comments about asking the public for some of this stuff, I really feel that the police are empowered to do some of this stuff. I believe that we have the resources existing in the number of police officers we have and the equipment, the amount that we're spending on capital expenses. I think we just really need to focus on those hotspot areas. And I know we try to police the whole city, but we have to focus on those hotspots because that's where it all starts.
Ken?
I do agree in focusing on the hotspots. Our police force has been shrunk and has continued to shrink, and it may not have the best technology possible to equip it. I forgot what I was going to say.
Went brain-dead for a minute?
Yes.
Do you want me to take over for a while?
Can I make one comment?
Can you give me a break?
All right, gentlemen. Moving on to the next question. The means by which we choose to allocate scarce resources as a city government are going to dictate a lot of what's possible as terms of policy. So, we need to ask each of you, what is your fiscal or budgetary philosophy? Where would you like to see revenue generated, any additional strategies for generating revenue? Where would you spend money as a city commission, and where would you cut back expenses as a city commission? Dan, you have the first opportunity to respond.
Sure. The city has a complicated budget. I printed out a copy, and we have like 25 funds, and there's over $51 million in all of the funds on a yearly basis. The general fund's about $24 million, and that's where we have the most discretion. I think the city has done a fairly good job considering the state of the economy in Michigan, affecting our major revenue sources, which are property tax, local income tax, and then state revenue sharing. Since those are the bulk of the revenues that relate to discretionary spending, I think we need to focus on shoring up those if we think about how to achieve revenues. And really, that gets back to the question of economic development, because all of those are based on a healthy economy. Property values will rise, and we will get more money. If more people are working, they'll be paying more income tax. So, that is the key to, from my perspective.
Thank you, Dan. Ken, question to you. What is your fiscal and budgetary philosophy?
We've cut back quite a bit over the years. I'd kind of like to stop cutting, if possible, and the way to do that is to generate more revenue, obviously. We need to attract more people here, we need to create jobs, we need to increase property values here in Muskegon, and all this is going to happen from economic development. And not giving away the whole kit and caboodle also when trying to cultivate that investment with Tifa. I don't propose 100% tax capture for Tifa, whereby all of the money captured from increase in property taxes goes to paying off those bonds. Instead, we need to be capturing some of that and putting it back into the general fund, because these investments are going to tax our infrastructure, tax our resources, and we need to be recuperating some money in the near term and not have to wait 30 years for, or 15 years, 30 years, however long that Tifa lasts, in order to start recuperating money from that tax property growth, property tax growth.
Bill, budgetary philosophy. Where do you seek to generate additional revenue? Where do you spend? Where do you cut?
Well, to get additional revenue, I hope you would have more workers in the city. That's one way to increase it. Hopefully, you would lobby hard enough that the state would keep cutting the revenue sharing that we get. We're probably going to face, be facing the loss of personal property tax. I would like to be able to have funds where we can go out and sell ourself. I'd like to be the new city manager, be out of the office instead of being in in the office. You know, Brian had a certain style, which was great. I'd like to see somebody with a real dynamic personality that would sell the city. What we did in 2002, when us that came in the office, the mayor and myself, we refused to pay the high cost of health insurance. We started more co-pays. At the same time, we looked at our pension situation, and we went to define contributions. So, the city of Muskegon doesn't really have the pension problems that other cities do. I don't see a big change in how it's allocated. I just wish we could create some more.
Excellent. And Mark, your fiscal or budgetary philosophy?
Well, you know, I grew up in Holland community with the Dutch, so some of that rubbed off on me. So, I am fiscally conservative. I practice that in my home life. My wife and I always have lived below our means, so we're, you know, basically get ahead of the banks and ahead of your debt. I believe I'm going to bring that with me to the commission. In manufacturing, we're challenged every year. Every department in our company has had cost-reduction goals. I think that the city does need to learn how to be more cost-effective. You know, granted, it's always easy to get the low-hanging fruit, but eventually, you have to do, you have to work harder for some of the other things, and there's always room for improvement, so we need to focus on that. The revenue will come with the added job, added economic development. The only area I would not cut budget would be obviously with the police department. I'd actually like to see other departments cut a little bit so that we could get more police presence. I, you know, I meant to follow up on that last time, so, thank you.
Excellent. Starting with Dan, any additional comments? No?
I would just add real quick that one way to generate revenue is getting Harbor 31 developed ASAP. That property's been there for over a decade, sitting with vacant lots, upon vacant lots. And the city is now going to have to be paying over $400,000 a year, $400,000 a year out of our general fund to cover bond repayments on that property. We need to get that developed ASAP.
Next question with Ken, starting the rotation. What is the city's role, and what policies would you suggest to continue downtown development? Ken?
The city should be a natural champion of our downtown, promoting it and celebrating it, encouraging investment in there. The city owns very little property itself downtown, so can't be in that capacity, but it can work with our current businesses to not only make sure that they're successful, but also working with potential investors to grow new businesses downtown. And also, we need to be working with, to deal with the perception of whether or not the city is business-friendly or not. There is this perception that the city is just unfriendly towards businesses, and we're going to have to deal with that. We need to, we need to improve our brand, basically, the city government with regard to its partnership with businesses.
Same question. Bill, downtown development?
Well, you know, at one point, I was a little opposed to the power of the Downtown Development Corporation, but I have no problem with that. I think they've done a fine job. I think the city needs to partner with them, and being that the lack of employees the city has in planning and economic development to use what skills they have, you got to make the city look better. The farmer's market was a strategic move that was started back in my first term in the 80s, and it's going to be, it'll come to fruition. That thing alone will bring enough people in where they can see what's there, who may talk to somebody else, who may say, what a great place for a coffee shop, what a great place for this. Just the idea that people will be in the downtown will make the downtown start to thrive. Just the idea that people will be in the downtown will make the downtown start to thrive. I think it was a huge plus and to have it privately financed was out of this world.
Mark, same question on downtown development?
I guess I can agree with Ken and Bill on this, that the, the city definitely needs to be there to break down barriers and to be the champions of, be the voice. I don't think that there's any policy that you can write that's going to just suddenly make downtown start developing. I think the, I read the other day that the, the city, some of the local leaders and the city government took a trolley ride around town and determined that there's a lot of, you know, kind of the gateway into the city, what does it really look like and what are the eyesores? And I, you know, I think, I, I think that was a great idea, wish I was responsible for it, but I think they needed to keep doing that, but then obviously also develop action plans from it. You know, how are they going to approach some of these private industries and private owner properties that are, you know, an eyesore? They need to obviously, they, they have to develop the message and go out and try to encourage these people to come better, be better community people and to, to clean it up because it is a gateway into our city. And if it, if it doesn't look good, then it'll definitely deter anybody's motive to come downtown.
Dan, finally on this question of downtown development?
Sure. I guess I don't have the name downtown Dan for nothing. I have, I live downtown. I served as a downtown manager and now I kind of view downtown a little bit more from the outside here in my role at the college. But one thing that really strikes me is that people, it is our perception, our community's perception is our downtown. And I see that from our employees here. I see that when the college has visitors to town, they judge our community based on our downtown. So it's vitally important that we, it's, that it looks vibrant and is, you know, improving. I think we have a ways to go yet. The city does have limited resources. They don't own property, but they can help a lot in terms of the zoning and planning. I think that they should really encourage the development of Western Avenue. I think, like Bill, the farmer's market is going to help immensely, but we need a walkable street on Western Avenue. That has to be the first priority in my mind.
Back across, we'll start with Ken and move down through. 30 seconds rebuttal if you'd like.
Okay, starting with me?
Yep.
All right. I would just like to quickly add that we need to improve our access to the waterfront from downtown. That was something that was incorporated in the original Downtown Development Authority in 1988. So 25 years ago, they were talking about how can we improve access to our waterfront from downtown? And here we are, still lacking sufficient access. So we need to be looking at pedestrian bridges or tunnels to improve access from our city's core to our waterfront. That will help be a catalyst for, for growth and development.
Bill?
Well, I'm, I'm going to segue a little bit. I see one of our city commissioners here, Byron, good to see you. This argument between the city and bike time is ridiculous. And if I'm elected, I will bring it up at every meeting. Byron knows that I can be a bulldog when I have to. If I have to meet with, with groups that people, you know, for some reason, there's no give and take in this thing. And, you know, I have some access. I talk to the mayor regularly. I, John Van White drives me nuts, but that's neither here. This thing can be taken care of. It's not that difficult. If the farmers have to take a day off, they have to take a day off. But what that could mean is that somebody's here and says, what a beautiful city you have. You're right here, here's the lake, there's the big lake. I may want to invest money here. I may want to open up a plant, I want to, may want to open up a store. So that thing needs to be resolved because it's just something for the radio stations or the paper to keep throwing back and forth like a ping pong. It's, it's ridiculous and it should be resolved.
Mark?
I'm good.
Dan?
It took somebody else's time. I'll give some up later.
I just wanted to add, one thing I didn't mention was the support for organizations improving downtown. I think the city did a good job this year when they're allocating more money through the Downtown Development Authority to downtown Muskegon now. I think promotion is an important part of improving downtown, so I think that that should be continued.
Thank you, gentlemen. Muskegon is a port city, there's no question. Just as Bill was mentioning a moment ago, we have the lake, we have the big lake. So the question to you first, Bill, actually, is how important is waterfront and port development to this city's future?
Well, I, I think it's, it's, you know, you, you have to take your resources and water is our resource. So, you know, we need to make it more attractive and we need to market it. I'm not in favor of moving fishermen's landings unless the, the move is going to be exactly what they've put in it. I, I worked with a group that built a new bathhouse and put the laundry facilities in it. That place is packed. It's, it's kind of a, like a everyday man's place where he can go and, and do what he wants to do. I realize that our development is going to be from the mark dock all the way to the power plant. We all agree on that. And, and I'm all for some type of, say Renaissance zone to develop, to develop the property, but, and there are some other things about port development that I, I don't want to say, but what's down there hasn't been very well taken care of, if anybody gets my drift.
Thank you, Bill. Mark?
You know, the one thing you learn in business is you want to leverage your, your advantages and obviously the waterfront and the port is one area that I guess we have the biggest advantage over everybody, so it's hugely important to me. You know, I already mentioned that, you know, port development, you know, is important and we need to, I guess, continue to work with the port, the newly formed committee, the Port Advisory. Continue to work with the county and the state governments to make this happen. Regarding the waterfront, I'm a big fan of developing Pierre Marquette Park. It's, you know, obviously it's, it's the old beach bar down there is an eyesore and needs to be torn down. I was just talking to Dave last night about that and, and, you know, I cannot wait for that place to get torn down and the Harrises to build something new there. I think the city did a good job on, on, on working with the Harrises and that, that kind of, I guess, work it, you know, that, they need to continue in that, that vein, so, so thank you.
Dan, again, the question, how important is waterfront and port development to the city's future?
Sure. Water defines us. I mean, if you show anyone where you're from in Muskegon, you point right to the edge of the water and I think it's probably the first attribute you describe when you tell someone from out of town where you live. We all get to enjoy the bike path, the wonderful state and city county parks that we have. So I think we, that's definitely true. We love the water. And what we need to do with it in the city of Muskegon, I think we need to continue to expand access. The bike path has been great. I think if we did more development at Pierre Marquette Park, Sappy, Lakeside, all of that, there's plenty of desirable properties to develop that would show off our waterfront. Port development is very important from an economic development point of view. And I would agree that with the consensus of a port authority or some sort of coordinating entity, I know that there's a lot of energy for this in the West Michigan and state community. I think we really need to get those people in Grand Rapids and at the state level focused on making that happen for Muskegon.
Thank you. Same to you, Ken. Port and waterfront development?
The blue water economy is going to be key to Muskegon's future and to take advantage of our water, it's not just going to be about port development or shipping goods. It's also going to be about manufacturing. Because manufacturing would be an exceptionally water intensive process and food processing as well. So those are things that we can do on our, on our waterfront. Beyond that, we need to be focusing on tourism, recreation, above the board, everything above the board in terms of how we can maximize use of our water. And in terms of development, I'd like to see that we focusing on our downtown and our lakeside. I'm excited about the Harris hospitality. I'm excited about CJ's being torn down and where Harris hospitality has going there. But I'm not keen on getting that completely, you know, all of Pierre Marquette developed with condominiums and hotels. I kind of like to see the development being focused on our downtown and the lakeside and do limited commerce beyond Harris hospitality at Pierre Marquette. But the blue water economy, it, it is Muskegon and, and we need to maximize that.
Opportunities for additional comments or rebuttals, starting with Bill?
You know, you, it's, it's, you grow up as a kid and they say, you're, you're on the deepest port on the Great Lakes. Why we haven't developed it more, you know, is probably a good question. But like everybody said, it's, it's our most valuable resource and it, it should look better than it does.
Mark? Dan? Ken? All right.
Next topic is the B.C. Cobb plant. As we know, it's expected to close or be mothballed in the words of Consumers Energy in 2016. Quite a negative for our community in terms of loss of tax base and the revenue that that brings, that we've already talked about in terms of budget and those very important jobs that are out there. What should be the city hall's role in turning this lemon into lemonade? And we start with Mark.
I guess, you know, that they are our largest tax revenue source. It's, I guess, it's unfortunate. The good news is they pushed it off to 2016 now, I guess, and hopefully that'll, I guess, hope for the best, prepare for the worst. So we definitely need to be getting prepared for that. We need to, should have that in our long-term plan as, as a big negative that's coming up and to know that we need to start trimming our, our spending now to get used to that revenue that's not there any longer. Meanwhile, I think we need to be proactive about working with Consumers Power, staying in contact with them as, you know, so we're, we're on the forefront of what's going to be happening to it and hopefully, so we don't have the issue with Sappy that it, it doesn't, I guess, things happen too quickly for us to react and get, get in front of it. So I guess stay engaged with the conversation.
B.C. Cobb issue, Dan?
Very similar to Mark. I think, I, I know, I read the budget report today. I know the city's prepared for it. I know that when it sinks in though, it's going to be hard for the jobs and the property tax revenue. I think the city can be proactive from a master plan perspective. I, again, this kind of ties into the port question because this is kind of one of the, the edges of that where it could extend to. I think if the city is proactive and gets a good idea, there's a lot of assets there where they, where they unload the coal now, that's a great shipping lane. So I think we need to work together with all those properties. Then again, working proactively with consumers, I think that consumers has been a relatively good. They're a public service, regulated by the public, so I think they will cooperate. I think we need to continue to engage them so that we, we, when, when the time comes, we have a plan.
Ken, the B.C. Cobb issue?
It definitely is a negative, absolutely, being our, our largest tax contributor. But we are also in limbo with, with regard to that property because they're mothballing it. They're not closing it, they're not planning on selling it, they're mothballing it. They're going to keep very minimum staff there so that they won't be subject to zoning changes, so we can't just change the zoning and, and have it go to a different property owner for a different purpose because they're going to be mothballing it and keeping it in continuous use in that capacity. So they can reactivate at any time. However, we should be working with them on, on using that property for its best use. And, and they are allowing us access to their port slip as part of the port consortium. So that, that is a good, good thing and we need to be going along that road further in terms of enhancing our port activities.
Bill? B.C. Cobb?
Yep. It, it's unfortunate that it's going to happen, but if you're running a business, you need to plan in advance and you have to look at, how many streams of revenue do we have? And we have a residential tax base that hopefully John Rupp's plan down on, down by Shoreline Drive will come to fruition. We will have the farmer's market property, also possibility of residential development. We have to try to work with all of our industrial ones, people that are here, so they stay and we, and we have that base. We need to try and raise some more revenue by having more people paying income tax into the city. And then you have to be, you know, you have to look at your budget. And I don't know if the day will come when we don't, we don't have an engineering department, we don't have a planning department. All we have is a police department. I mean, it's a sad, sad thing to think that we've lost that much revenue, but we have to be prepared for it.
End responses, starting with Mark, 30 seconds or down the roll? Gentlemen, Muskegon is a diverse community and that has often been referred to as one of our great strengths. But on occasion, there has been discussion about there being a racial divide in Muskegon itself. And that's the question we now pose to you, starting with Dan. Is there a racial divide in Muskegon? And if so, what can city hall do to bring the community together? And if not, how do you deal with the people that think that this divide is a major road block?
This is a topic that's really important to me and it's kind of too bad that there's four white people, just, white men discussing it because it's really not a fair topic to only let four white people discuss. Race is a construct of our, of our society that is, is an unfortunate one. Our history has brought us to this point where we are a divided society. And that is true in Muskegon as well. There's positive things about the diversity, but we definitely have roadblocks or issues related to that. In terms of race, our, our neighborhoods are segregated. We have places of employment that aren't as integrated as they should be. And I know that interracial dialogue or racial dialogue that happens internally is not always positive. I think that it's very important as a city to demonstrate how to positively have race relations and to step up and realize that in, we need to afford opportunity to everyone in the city.
Ken, is there a racial divide in Muskegon? And if so, what can city hall do to bring it together? If not, how do you deal with people who think there is no problem?
As you mentioned about racial diversity being an asset, it, it definitely is an asset for, for Muskegon and I benefited greatly going to Muskegon Public Schools and having that, that racial diversity there. Whether, to the question of whether there's a racial divide in Muskegon, unfortunately there is and we have to accept that, that, that it exists. We can't sugarcoat it, we can't whitewash it. It exists. And in order for our community to achieve its utmost potential, we have to acknowledge it and work to eliminate that, that divide. Whether accurate or perceived hostility, you know, between races in, in our community exists and we, we're going to have to work together on that. The city can't legislate that away. We can only provide opportunities to, to dialogue and work together on overcoming our, our differences. There's more that unites us than, than, than separates us. At the core, we all want the same thing. We, we all want to be safe and secure in our homes. We all want to be safe and secure in our neighborhoods. We all want to be employed, have a roof over our head and food on our table.
Thank you, Ken. Bill?
Well, absolutely there is and a, a good example of it is why we went to the ward system and at large is because you could be an African-American person and live in the Catherine Angel area and get every vote around and never be able to get enough votes to be elected. And that's the reason that we went to the ward system. And as you'll see, out of two of the wards, we have two African-American commissioners. So yes, racism exists. I switched from parochial school to public school to experience diversity. And you can take diversity and you can take all the good things you like out of it, out of the culture, but then you have to live with the other parts that you perceive to be what that other culture is. I've spent my whole life working towards race relations. I still do. I'm with buddies that might, might want to talk a certain way, they don't talk that way around me. And it's embarrassing we only have one black police officer. It's not acceptable.
Thank you. Mark?
Obviously, yes, we are, do have a racial divide. You know, we, we're a city commission, not, I guess, superheroes, so it's unfortunate that we can't do more, but I think the, what we can do is, is not have a tolerance for it in the, the city administration and to lead by example. I mean, I'm hopeful because every generation, I think, it, it's, you know, the world's getting smaller and every genera, all the kids you see, it's less of an issue for them. So I think it's, it's just going to take time, unfortunately.
Starting with Dan, any additional comments?
Tough issue.
Indeed. Thank you.
David's reference to gentlemen brings up the, the next question that, that we have. When I first came here in 81, Marguerite Holcomb was providing her leadership in city hall. And when you take office, if elected, in January 1st, no woman will be serving on the city commission with you. And that'd be the first time in generations that that's the case. Is that an issue with you? And how would you respond or will you respond, being in that situation? And we will begin with Ken.
Obviously, the, the more representative our government is of the community, I think the stronger and better that government is. So it, it is unfortunate that we're not going to have a woman's perspective on the city commission. I would like that. And I would like to give thanks to Leah and Sue Ringo for their service to the community over, over the years. They've served admirably and with grace and, and I appreciate their, their contributions to our community. community. That said, I do take consolation in the fact that we have many strong women in our community still that are going to have a seat at the table, that are going to have, I'm sure, any of these gentlemen's here ears, that any of us here will be open to women in our community to listen to them and get their input. And it's great that our community organizations, you look at United Way, you look at the Community Foundation, you look at the Chamber of Commerce, there are a lot of strong women that run those organizations, that are involved with those organizations, and so women are going to have a very strong and powerful say still in our community's future, and that's the way it should be.
Bill, same question.
Yeah, it's unfortunate in a way, but if you didn't have the qualified candidates, then that's the way it goes. My first term, I served with Marguerite Holcomb, Joan Stewart, and Mary Jones. In my second one, I served with Claire Shepherd and with Karen Bowie. And I will say this, as a man, I have sat and looked at an issue and thought I had a pretty good handle on it, and you would get a female perspective on it that would all of a sudden say, you know, I didn't think of that, or that point of view did not register with me. And they're, they can be tough, but they can also provide a little bit of a softer side to the discussion sometimes. So, yeah, it's beneficial, but it's, it is what it is. There's no one elected, so this is what you have. I mean, you've got two or plus, that's what you got.
Mark?
I guess I did find it odd that out of the, I guess, the loving in the primary, there's only Leah who was already on the, had the seat. I guess, I'm not, I don't think it's a big of a deal. I mean, I'm married, I think Dan's married, I know.
I'm married.
Byron.
You're married.
We all go home and we discuss, I discuss issues with my wife all the time, so while their voice may not be heard directly, the decisions I make are going to be probably talked about with my wife. I mean, some would argue that Michelle Obama is actually running the country right now, so I think there will still be a voice from women on the board, even if there's not any sitting there.
Dan?
Sure. I think it's kind of a shame that there's not going to be any women on the commission. Said that on the night the primary results came out. It's true that no candidates were selected, and there's maybe reasons for that. I think it is unfortunate because I think that, like a lot of our social constructs, gender is a very strong one, and I think it's not a good example for our community when they can't look up to a woman who's in the city commission. I think it would help all of our citizens if they saw someone who represented them. That said, I think there's not a lot to do at this point. I think what happens with these things always is, you know, there's causes and they encourage people to run, and I think that that, what happened this time should be taken to heart by people, and it's been taken to heart by me. I mean, I'm not going to give up my chance to run now, but I think that we should encourage representative people of the city to run for election, so hopefully that'll happen next time.
Starting with Ken, anything else you'd like to say? 30-second rebuttal. Going to our lightning round. Yes, no answers are what we are seeking, so we will move this quickly. We will start with Bill. I will ask a yes/no question, we'll just go down the line, and then we'll double back and go to the next one. Starting with Bill, should we reform our zoning laws to increase urban farming?
Yes.
Mark?
Yes.
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 Starting with Mark, from an MLive reader. Are you open to the relocation of Fisherman's Landing for port development?
If conditions are met, yes.
Dan?
Same answer.
Yes.
Same.
Starting with Dan, do you support more commercial development at Pier Marquette Park?
Yes.
Ken?
With reason, yes.
Yes, I've been harping on it for years.
Mark?
Yes.
All right, starting with Ken, do you support a downtown casino?
I do not object to one.
Come on.
Yes or no?
Yes or no?
I'd have to see a proposal. I can't, I can't say yes, absolutely, willy-nilly. Any casino you want to put downtown, go ahead. So I do not object to one.
Okay. Bill, yes or no?
Yes.
Dan?
I'm with Ken. I'm not personally supportive, but I wouldn't object to one under certain conditions.
All right. Starting with Bill then. Starting with Bill then, should the city encourage creation of a new summer music festival?
No.
Mark?
Encourage, yes.
Encourage, yes. Pay for, no. I'm with Dan there, yes.
All right, then to Mark. With the agreement on current long-term water contracts with many neighboring communities, should Muskegon continue to pursue consolidation of water plant operations with Muskegon Heights?
Yes.
Yes. Absolutely, yes.
Yes, we have the capacity. We should make it a county water system with the city of Muskegon, you know.
Thank you, Bill.
Forefront.
From a Facebook, yeah, yeah, that's a good, yeah. Oh! From a Facebook poster, they wanted to know, and please answer this with one or two words, what is the most pressing issue in the city of Muskegon? Dan?
Economic development.
Mark, or Ken?
Economic growth, job development.
Bill?
Crime and image.
Mark?
Economic development.
Finally, this is one you haven't heard before, guys. There are two mayoral candidates on the ballot. Will you endorse the mayoral candidate, and if so, which one? Ken?
I like them both. I worked with Garwin and the NIMs Neighborhood Association, he's the president of that, I'm the treasurer of the NIMs Neighborhood Association. He's a great guy, and I also know Abiati. I met him four years ago at the leadership.
Which one, if any?
2009. I like them both, and I.
Do you endorse one?
I look forward to working with either one of them in the city mission.
Bill?
Neither.
Mark?
I got Garwin sign my front yard, so, and Abiati are friends, but I'm going to support that one.
Dan?
Same with Mark. I'm supporting Garwin, although I've worked with Abiati a lot, too.
Very good. We were having some directed questions, but because of time, we are removing those from the format, and now we are going to the candidate ask questions. Want to take?
Sure.
So yes, each of the candidates will have the opportunity to ask a question of one of their opponents. By random lot, we will start with Mark. Mark, you have the opportunity to ask a question.
This could backfire on me. Dan is actually, obviously, in first place in the primary. I think he's going to be a hard one to catch, so I'm going to ask it of Dan. And if you had to, if you had to vote for one of us, who would it be and why?
I'm not really sure that's a fair question. I really, I think I would have to say I'm not formally endorsing any of the other candidates. I think, in terms of the mayor race, I just did, and that's a hard decision, but I think in my own race, it's not really a fair thing to ask.
So you can, okay. The question was if you had to vote for one.
Yes.
Well, there is the option to only vote for one, and I'm not formally encouraging that, but that's an option.
So be it. Dan?
Sure. I had a question for Bill. How would you react to folks saying that you represent the old guard and may not be open to new ideas from new perspectives, including outside the city?
Well, that's really, I'm glad you asked me that question. I drive around the city every day, and I can look at the projects I've been involved in, from Harbertown to privatizing garbage service, to the private partnership with Fisherman's Landing, to any number of the Holiday Inn, the center down there, the Alternative Energy Center. I've been the fourth vote for so many things that for anybody to think that I wouldn't be able to change is silly. I mean, I know they call me old school, but my mind is working all the time. I even know how to rap, so. We can get into that if you want.
Very good. Thank you. Ken, your question.
My question also is to Bill, and it just came tonight because earlier you said the city hall takes too long to act sometimes. And so I'm wondering if you support giving the Muskegon Lakefront LLC another two years to develop that, or whether you would move forward with collecting the back taxes and collecting the $500,000 that's due for them violating their previous agreement?
Well, you know, that's another good question, because I sat one time and I listened to Vice Mayor Spataro say, if I had this lakefront property, I would have it developed. Well, he's never developed anything in his life. So you may have more information on this than I do, but you can't get blood from a turnip. If there's nothing, if there's nothing to get, then take the property back yourself and do what you have. But I was part of that deal when it started out, it looked like a good deal when we did it, and sometimes those deals don't work out. So am I ready to give them two more years? No. But I always try to find a way for some kind of consensus between two parties rather than be at loggerheads, and that's not old school.
All right. And Bill, your opportunity to ask a question.
Yeah, my question is for Mark. I mentioned earlier in the day that there's a good chance that the state will do away with the personal property tax. To fill the holes in the city budget, would you approve a levy of our last mill that we have, of our 17 mills to levy, or would you approve rating the city's rainy day fund?
I wasn't actually aware the city had a rainy day fund.
Then you don't know about your government. I mean, every government has a rainy day fund, and hopefully, up to 10%.
I've gone into every job and every project with little knowledge of things, and I am probably a very quick learner, and when I put my heart into something, I'll find out the answers and I'll make the decisions. So I work in the manufacturing environment, and I'm a vice president of product engineering. I make million-dollar decisions daily on recalls and safety. I make budget decisions, I make tough decisions every day, so this is nothing new to me. I think I'd offer a good background of this.
Thank you, gentlemen. So we'll now move into your opportunity to give your closing comments, and again, by random lot, we're going to start with Bill. Bill, please give us your closing.
Yeah, I don't know how I won both of these, but I guess I did. I'm going to encapsulate my campaign with two words, experience and leadership. So I went today to Webster, and I looked it up, and someone experienced is skilled as a result of observation, use, or practice, knowledgeable or wise because of experience. For leadership, the position or office of a leader, the capacity or ability to lead. I believe I have both of those, and I would appreciate your vote November 5th. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Bill. Dan, you have the next opportunity.
Yeah, I'd just like to reiterate the experiences I've had. I have, I'm kind of like Goldilocks. I've been here a short time, but not too long, so I think I have just the right amount of experience and knowledge of the community. And I got a story that kind of encapsulates that. I'm on the Nelson Neighborhood Improvement Association Board. It's a diverse board of downtown residents. There's a lot of different people who live in downtown and who sit on that board, and every month when we get together, it can be all over the place in terms of where we're going to go. And I feel, I've been involved since I've been here for nine years, and I feel like I bring a good perspective to the board, and I think that that's what boards need, is someone who can listen to all the different sides, can put out their way to move forward, and I feel like I've done that in that organization, and I think I could take that onto city government. So I look forward to hopefully receiving your vote on November 5th.
Thank you, Dan. Ken, you have the next opportunity for your closing.
I don't know if I should feel relieved or neglected, having not been asked a question earlier, my fellow candidates. But in closing, I would just say, I love Muskegon, and I fervently believe in its great potential, and I'm committed to working with the businesses and residents in each of our 15 neighborhoods to bring about a citywide renaissance. By working together within our neighborhoods and across our neighborhoods, we can foster a healthy, vibrant community for all. And as your at-large city commissioner, I will work towards reducing crime, strengthening and diversifying our economy, enhancing educational opportunities, and providing efficient and effective government services. Help me ensure that the city makes meaningful progress on these priorities by voting for Ken Johnson November 5th, and please ask your family, friends, and neighbors to do so as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Ken. Mark, your closing, please.
I guess first off, I was really encouraged by the number of candidates that came out, and actually qualified candidates. While I said I would endorse Garwin, I think Abiati's a good candidate as well. I'm just going to have to go with experience on that one, not Bill's experience. But, you know, even with the, I think there's four capable people up here, I think everyone has the opportunity to come out and vote for the candidate they want, not against somebody. I think we all have a different background. You know, my background is more in the industry and small business, so I think I would be a great choice. I guess I would be concerned with either of these two gentlemen because they like time, apparently, so the city commission meetings might go on a little bit long.
Not when I'm on there.
Just kidding, Bill, but thank you.
All right. Thank you, gentlemen. So we have now heard from all of our candidates, we have heard the closings from all of our candidates, and hopefully this has empowered you, as residents of the city of Muskegon, to choose amongst these four gentlemen on November 5th. We would like to thank you on part of MLive and Muskegon Community College, on behalf of Peg West, Paula Holmes-Greely, Dave Alexander, myself, David Taki-Taki. Thank you for attending the Muskegon 2013 Commission Debates.